... They have alarms in the system, but there's no, you know, hot, mad, drink weather. There's anything like that. They said.
That's not good.
No, I thought it was like a brand product or something. No, they just called the fire because the wood, the wood break building, they do it, but it's a nice rebuild building. If the fire breaks out this unit, it's not spreading to the other side.
That's good.
That's a little bit cool. You don't want the water damage.
That's, yeah, that's okay. It's something in one tenant that just went out. It's like the whole thing happens this morning. We've been, you know, probably a hundred fifty thousand, but so we got added a hundred fifty for the office.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. How are you?
Where are you?
I get like one. It's from school across.
No, sure, but you got told them that you'll be there.
There was a, there was a, that there was a surveyor that was, that they had to go over.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. What do you mean? Do the Xs mean for this?
Thank you, sir. Okay, now I don't, that does. Isn't this capet? Oh, okay. They still have the marks of the rest.
Yeah, the fifty four million is perfect.
Hey, is there, is there, right now, we're looking for, um, council meetings or groups to get the numbers.
On each chair, it says, uh, eight, eight, seven million, six hundred and fifty five thousand. How do you run that?
Eight, two, eight, zero, five, six.
So it's eighty seven, six, 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 fifty five. And then eighty three, eighty, yeah, eighty.
This special meeting of the Pontiac City Council is hereby called to order at six eleven P. M. June twenty second, twenty twenty two. Uh, let's see, right, the special meeting.
Carrington.
Present.
Good, Goodman. James.
Here.
McGinnis.
Present.
Nicholson.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Rutherford.
Present.
Mr. President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Quorum being established. Is there a motion to authorize the excusing of Councilman McHale Goodman from the meeting for personal reasons?
Moved by Carrington.
Okay. It's been moved by Carrington, seconded by Parker. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call on that motion, Clerk Doyle.
James.
Yes.
In it.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Six y's, no nays.
That motion carries. Is there a motion to approve this evening's agenda as presented and prepared?
So moved.
Support.
Been moved by Nicholson, seconded by Carrington. Any discussion? Any amendments? Hearing no further discussion, roll call on approval of the agenda, Clerk Doyle.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Six y's, no nays.
That motion carries. We are at an item that has been before us for multiple settings. It's the adoption of an emergency ordinance, City of Pontiac, twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, General Appropriations Act ordinance and fee schedule. It was properly moved and seconded two, a week plus ago, so two prior city council meetings ago. We also have had eight special meetings on the budget as well as a public hearing. So this is the final session focusing on the budget for the fiscal year to come. So this is the, the motion before us. And Deputy Mayor, any further information you would like to offer for city councils consumption?
Uh, thank you, Council President. Before this meeting, there were a few changes that were pointed out that need to be made to the org chart. Those are being made now and they will be brought to you. The clerk assistant title is incorrect and that will be changed, as is the constituent services specialist title. So that title will be changed as well. Those should be brought out in just a few moments here. Other than that, um, there is one more question that is being researched now as far as the budgeted positions sheet. So we are looking through old council minutes to make sure that the number that is on there is correct. And as soon as we have that, there will be, as far as I know, no more edits that need to be made.
Any discussion on the motion before us? President Protem Carrington, you have the floor.
Yes, just a pretty quick, I had a chance to, to move through, um, the sections of the budget. I didn't see any particular errors that were openly found, so I don't know if everyone had a chance to look through it and see if they find anything.
I was able to review each page for the, the final document of the GL numbers that staff had prepared, and that was my finding as well. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just waiting for clarity before I can feel comfortable about voting on this budget. There's something that came to, in my view, and I want to understand how, if this is right and when did this happen, so it's on there.
We're not voting until that material is before us. Any further discussion?
You look nice. That's it.
It's all a facade. It's a mirage.
It happens.
It's a suit coat covering up a short sleeve shirt.
You bad.
Poison Ivy. Councilman Parker.
Yes, I did, I was just curious as to how, how, what was it percent of in, or what was the amount of increase from this, this year's budget in comparison to last year's budget?
Does anyone have that information handy in terms of the revenues and expenditures for the previous fiscal year? Deputy Mayor Stevens?
So one of our, so that question was brought up and one of our finance team is actually getting last year's, uh, what am I trying to say? Not adopted budget, amended budget, so the total expenditure, so that we can compare last year's total expenditure to this year's proposed expenditure, which is what you had requested, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, the, the current year that we're in, what was the amended total expenditure? And what is the total expenditure that is proposed? Did you want just the general fund, Councilman, or did you want the, I thought you wanted the entire budget?
The entire budget.
Okay.
And the reason I ask that is because I know we got some council members who have that data in their houses, probably sitting there seeing what we doing, it's going to come and talk about where we are. So we might as well be prepared to have that discussion. Increased it. Well, I know we did, I just, and I know it can be explained, but.
Yeah, so, um, as I was saying to you, the, the total expenditure is increased, the total revenues are also increased, and when I, when we were talking before, I said that, you know, the, I was talking about the deficit spending, but that's not the question that you asked, so I want to make sure that we answer your actual question.
Right.
Okay.
Councilwoman James.
Well, that, that is my question. I, I know by law we are not allowed to approve a budget that is overextended, so I don't see any totals on here. Do we have what the total budgets?
Totals are in the, yeah, the budget ordinance.
The budget ordinance?
Section six, budgeted revenues and expenditures estimated.
Oh, okay.
Total revenues and expenditures, including transfers in and out and other sources for the various funds of the City of Pontiac, beginning July one, two thousand twenty two, are eighty three million, eight hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred and seven dollars in revenues and eighty seven thousand, six hundred and fifty five thousand, uh, four hundred and thirty three dollars in expenditures as set forth in the twenty twenty two.
What page are you on?
It's page two of budget ordinance.
Page two?
Two. Section six at the top, budgeted revenues and expenditures.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Budget ordinance.
So what's been distributed is the organizational chart. These are the two sheets that would replace the applicable sheets.
Correct.
So we are ousting the previous clerk organization chart and the previous mayor's organizational chart.
And then, Councilwoman James, to answer your question, or your implied question, yes, um, expenditures exceed revenues, which means that we are spending more than we are taking in, and the reason why that is allowable is we are pulling from fund balance to cover that deficit. What you're not allowed to do is to spend in aggregate more money than you bring in plus what you have in the bank.
Do you know a total on what, what is, you know, how much are we exceeding?
I just did the math.
About five thousand.
Three million, seven hundred and seventy five thousand, two hundred and twenty six dollars.
Would you say that again, please?
Three million, seven hundred and seventy five thousand, two hundred and twenty six dollars.
Councilman Nicholson, did you have a point?
Yeah, the, with that three point seven, three point eight million dollars, with the, um, on, of course, because of GAAP accounting principles, we can't add in some of the revenues that we intend to seek, like grant dollars and things like that in the future. Do we anticipate that, that three point seven, seven, five by the end of next fiscal year would likely be, uh, gone, or that's the intention?
So the.
Unbalanced?
The, that's a great question. The entirety of that deficit spending will not be eliminated through grant funding, but we do very much anticipate that we should be able to take, to take out at least five hundred thousand dollars of that, if not more, just based on funding that we know is coming, but we have not received the official letters. We just have verbal commitments.
Councilwoman Rutherford.
Repeat what you just said at the end again. You said verbal what?
Verbal commitments.
So when will we get these letters?
So grant funding letters come in on a rolling basis. We're, we're working right now with, um, one of our funders to, um, solidify, uh, the, the funding request and actually receive the letters.
But we have the initial, I guess what I'm asking, do we have the initial letter saying that we have the, so we, we on hope again? Are we hoping that we get, I'm a little.
So that is why we did not include those funds in the budget, right? We, we want the budget passed, not on hope, the budget is passed on the idea that we will actually be taking these funds from fund balance, and we hope that we will be able to lower that amount of money, but we did not, we did not, we intentionally did not build hope into the budget, so that you were passing the budget with eyes wide open, full clarity, that there is the possibility that these funds will not, will not happen. That is always, whenever you are working on grant funds, there is always a possibility that those funds will not come through, and so we intentionally did not include them in the budget.
Others that wish to have the floor? Councilwoman James?
Yeah, just kind of looking at, uh, those numbers that have been given and thinking about, you know, in our discussions about, uh, that we're trying to invest in our city and looking at the ways that we, we do expect to see projected income for, uh, next year be increased. We know, uh, that we're going to see approximately a million or so dollars in income tax revenue coming in. We've already talked about that. In addition to that, you're suggesting that we might be able to recover five hundred thousand of this deficit amount through grants and, and other funding. What about the use of the investment that we've made in code enforcement? What would, what would be the projected, um, revenue from increased code enforcement?
That's a great question. So there will, there will definitely be some increased revenue from code enforcement from the standpoint of writing tickets and collecting on those tickets, but, um, tickets and ticket collection is actually, um, not the, not the intention of code enforcement, right? It's, it's not a revenue generator. It is meant to be a, a deterrent to non-compliance. So whatever, whatever increased revenue we would see, it, we, we have not built that in as a revenue model. It is really, we don't want to see ticketing. We want to see notifications and compliance. And then the idea is that once you have increased compliance, you will have increased taxable values, which will translate into increased tax revenue, which is far greater than ticketing.
Councilman Parker.
Thank you, sir.
One last question. I think when we were discussing the increase due to the contract with the Sheriff's Department, we talked about the possibility of using some of the ARPA dollars to over, to cover some of that. Is that still in play?
So that is, that is still a possibility, and, um, that would still be drawing from fund balance. Correct.
Other discussion?
Okay, just want to make sure.
Councilwoman Rutherford, you have the floor.
I'm sorry. Uh, I apologize, uh, Council President. On the page four of the budget position, did we add the increases that we made for the senior centers? And if so, how much, how was it split between the jobs?
So just four thousand dollars there? Five thousand dollars there?
Okay, I stand corrected. Thank you. My friend showed me. Thank you. My friend showed me.
Other further discussion? Councilwoman James has the floor.
I guess I would ask, you know, my fellow council people, if they see any potential for revenue, you know, based on the budget that we're, that's before us, what do you see as being possible revenue generators at this point?
Those that wish to have the floor? Pro Tem William Carrington?
Well, I guess basically, some of the more basic ways is increase homeownership. If, you know, our population continue to increase, also increasing the business community from new businesses coming in, our community. But other than that, I don't necessarily think that we have a really, really sound, where we can just add some revenue. Right now, the parking structure really don't, we don't even own that anymore, I don't believe, right? So, we're not counting too much in that, that particular fund. I don't think so. I don't know.
Councilman Nicholson and then Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I, I go back to the, the Deputy Mayor's points that this is, I mean, truly, even though it appears to be a deficit, it's dollars being taken from fund balances. I think the, the, that investment in, in what we've been lacking for so long, as long as we do this right, you know, we bring in people, we do our enforcement, the enforcement pays in a cleaner, brighter city, a place that more people want to locate their businesses, people want to buy homes in, you know, those, those revenues, those income tax dollars, those increased property values will, you know, be the biggest possible revenue generator that's out there. And, and, you know, that might not be something we see in one year's time, but it's certainly, I think, the strategic investments of building the infrastructure of the city, we're going to see even some unintended, you know, benefits to saying, okay, now that we have more control of the process, we're able to be more thoughtful about where we're putting dollars, how we're using dollars and using resources. So, I think it may not be a very obvious, this is where we can amp up the game and get more dollars, but I think it certainly will, will, will be a strategic investment that pays off in a long-term beautification and reinvestment in the city.
And I want to share that it's not something that's pleasant, but it's something that's real. Think about how many taxpayer dollars were budgeted this current fiscal year, but were not expended because positions went unfilled, or, you know, people departed positions and they were unable or, or not posted. And so, there is some budgetary savings that happens depending on how big of a gap or a shortfall there is in terms of personnel filling positions. Where this budget is built out, assuming full employment for the full twelve months, and that's the ideal scenario, and also the most expensive scenario, but it's quite possible as the fiscal year goes on, month after month, we keep analyzing to see, you know, what is the forecast versus what materializes. So, we'll look to the Finance and Personnel Subcommittee to be able to give us some of that analysis and advocate for those answers. And I think that because we've gone through this process so exhaustively, scrutinized it in such detail, that we have a really solid foundation here moving forward as a city council to analyze, how is the fiscal year progressing? Where are we seeing gaps with what we've identified as priorities, and they're not coming to fruition? So, that way, we can see, okay, what's the barriers to these projects or these positions, you know, the funds not being expended? So, that way, we can course correct and we can amend the budget to reflect what reality is. If, if there's no longer a need or no longer an operation that we're going to fund, let's reflect that. And that, to Councilwoman James's question, will have a very dramatic impact on what that variation is in terms of revenues versus expenditures. Deputy Mayor Stevens?
Yes, thank you. So, what I was going to say to that point is that one of the things that we did in this budget is we took the, so, let me, let me go back a step. The, the city has a number of different funds. The fund that we talk about most frequently is the general fund. And so, we can think about these funds as bank accounts. So, the general fund is the general bank account, the bank account that we talk about most frequently. And that's the, that's the account that we really focus on when we say we're not allowed to have a deficit. So, that, that's the fund that, that we are looking at when we say that. And again, you can have, you can deficit spend as long as you actually have the fund balance to, to pull from, to cover that, that deficit, which as of right now, we actually do. Then we have a number of funds that are, can be called enterprise funds. So, these funds run basically as miniature businesses. One of those funds, and probably the most important for this budget of those funds, is actually the Building and Safety Fund. And so, that fund is primarily, gets its revenue through the cost of building permits. And what we were able to do for, for this budget was to properly allocate all of the relevant expenses that could go underneath that bank account, to that bank account. So, we took the code enforcement officers, which enforced the building code and moved them back to that fund line. And so, doing that was, while it wasn't a source of revenue, it was a reduction in expenses to the general fund. And so, moving code enforcement back to the building fund, putting them back in the org chart of the Building Department, really reduced the overall expenditure to the general fund, did not increase its revenue, but reduced the overall general fund expenditure.
Others that wish to have the floor? Clerk Doyle, per understanding of state law, if this clean item is not adopted tonight, the only final recourse is scheduling a special meeting for tomorrow, correct? Or is today legally the last possibility for the seven days before the end of the fiscal year?
Twenty, so, you think, days of twenty seconds of tomorrow?
And if the document is not adopted on the twenty-second or the twenty-third, does that mean the city of Pontiac ceases to exist as a municipality come July first?
I don't think so. Well, we will be out of compliance with the charter.
So, I have.
Mayor Stevens, you have the floor.
Thank you. I have first the answer to Councilwoman Rutherford's question. So, Councilwoman Rutherford was asking a question about, where is it?
You answered it in text.
Concern specialist?
Yes, the, the community, the community relations specialist position. And so, the answer is that is a position that did not come before this council. That position previously existed. It was originally, it was originally filled by a, an individual who departed the city in March of this year, and so, has been refilled with a new individual. And the budgeted position at that time was in fact fifty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars. And I will pass around the budgeted positions from this current fiscal year for you to see, and that position is highlighted. And then, the next question. So, the total revenue amended budget for the fiscal year that we are in right now was seventy-nine point two million dollars?
In revenue.
In revenue. And the total expenditure for the year we are in right now was eighty-six point one million dollars. The total revenue for the fiscal year that is in front of you is eighty-three point nine million dollars. And the total expenditure for the fiscal year that is in front of you is eighty-seven point seven million dollars.
Further discussion on the motion before us? Councilman Nicholson?
I, so, I just want to point out that the deficit last year, at the time of approval, would have been six point nine million dollars. And right now, we are looking at passing a budget of three point seven, or three point eight. So, there is a lower deficit. Both numbers are higher, but the spread is thinner this year than it was last year.
In raw numbers and in percentage?
Correct.
Further discussion? Pro Tem Carrington?
Just one good question. So, with the city having the deficit this current fiscal, and then, so, how far has that, our general fund depleted based on last year and actually what we plan to do this year? Do you know how that answers, or is not?
So, no. So, that, thank you. I, I don't have the exact answer because the projected deficit, as Council President stated, is not going to be the actual deficit because of projects and positions that went uncompleted. And so, I don't know what that final number will be.
Okay, thank you.
If we look at just the city council budget alone, which may be an outlier, but if it's the one that I'm most familiar with, but granted, we've only been in these positions for six months. But if you look at our pre, our fiscal year that is ending in a few days, over fifty percent of what was budgeted for the city council was not expended. And there are a variety of factors for that. It's not about judgment or blame. It's just, it's just real life. Pandemic lingers, positions not ultimately posted or hired, priorities that were incorporated into the council budget, such as other professional services, animal control, that wasn't acted upon, including district projects that we've begun, you know, firing on all cylinders and planning and executing. But, I mean, it's probably well over. I don't have that, you know, the analysis presently, but it could be upwards of like seventy percent of the city council's budget was not spent. So, to Councilwoman, you know, the conversations we've been having for the present fiscal year, what is forecasted and budgeted in terms of what happens in real life, there's quite, there's quite a disconnect there. And so, it's on us as city leaders and, and departmental and, and mayoral office leadership that we, for this coming fiscal year, keep our budgeting tighter to reality. So, that way, we have a clearer, more accurate sense as the year goes on, on what's going on. And that's not a matter of judgment. There was high turnover. There was change in, in the mayoral administrations. There was a lot of vacancies in positions in this last fiscal year, and the pandemic still has been lingering, and not to mention supply chain and, and inflation and global conflicts. Councilwoman Rutherford?
I'm calling for the vote.
So, do all council members feel as though they have all of the information they need for the ordinance that is before us?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Everyone is clear on the motion before us? Councilwoman James?
I, I just have one point, not on the, the budget itself, but just in general, kind of following on your thought, Mr. President. What, when do those funds that were not expended go back into the, you know, when will the general fund reflect the funds that were not expended from this current fiscal year over to the next fiscal year?
So, I will let Director Carrington answer that question. The very, very short answer is that on July 1, when the budget flips, anything that was not expended will roll over to fund balance. But when it will actually be reflected is a matter of accounting, and I will let Director Carrington answer that question.
Good evening, council. So, Councilwoman James, just kind of, you know, moving forward from, from Deputy Mayor's comment, as everyone knows, our books will be technically ending as of June 30. We will continue to do some transactions. You know, we may pay for goods that we have received prior to June 30. We may pay for goods that we received prior to June 30. We may, there may have been goods that we paid for that we haven't, that we won't receive until the end of the fiscal year. So, you know, June 30 is the cutoff date. We will still be finalizing some transactions to tie to the end of the year. As of July 1, all of those amounts would, you know, they would be effective as of July 1. As we go through our closeout process, we won't know the exact number. We'll have an idea of what those numbers look like, but we won't have an exact number. Throughout the months, we continue to both collect on revenues that are owed for the fiscal year that we're wrapping up, as well as pay expenses through the last day of August. We, we generally allow for two months for any transactions to get finalized that would apply for the current fiscal year. So, at that point, we'll have a better idea. And as we go through the, the yearly, the annual closeout process, along with the audit preparation, is when we get to the final numbers as to exactly what the fund balance is going to be and what the final revenues and final expenditures are. We'll have a good sense of that sometime as we complete the pre-trial statements for the audit. That's going to be sometime in the fall, and we'll have the final numbers from the auditors. We, we expect to have those. We're required to have those by the end of December. So, sometime during the month of December, we should have that information. But we'll have a good sense of that, you know, initial, early sense of that towards the end of the summer. We'll have a better sense of that sometime in the fall as we start going through the final closeout and audit preparation, and then we'll get the final results when we get the audit in December.
Any further clarification on the motion before us? Is everyone clear on the momentous vote before us? It is the adoption of an emergency ordinance for the City of Pontiac, 2022, 2023 General Appropriations Act ordinance and fee schedule. It's been properly moved and seconded at the June 14, 2022 city council meeting, tabled to yesterday's June 21 meeting and tabled to tonight to allow ample review, research, amending, and document preparation and verification. So, with that, hearing no questions for clarification, everyone is clear on the motion before us. Roll call on adoption of this motion. Clerk Doyle?
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Six yays and no nays.
That motion carries. Congratulations, city council. You have survived the budget cycle.
I'm not building a fight, right?
And with that, the hard work of governing for the fiscal year will be upon us in a matter of days. We salute the mayor, deputy mayor, staff, and for that matter, community members that have helped us through the process, shape, refine, hone, and advocate for a stronger budget document to ensure that the well-being of the city of Pontiac and all of the property located here in our city's boundaries have as successful of a year as possible for this fiscal year. We rely on our Finance and Personnel Subcommittee in these next twelve months to help us get even stronger. And next steps in terms of this budget process, at next week's regular city council meeting, I will include a discussion item for us to share out some of the highlights, you know, share and announce with the community that the process has concluded, and then give some summary highlights as well in terms of the priorities that have been included in this budget. I will also share that, I forgot. Any, any further discussion on the motion that was just before us? Any clarification needed? So, with that, the next item of business is public comment. Clerk Doyle, or Pro Tem Carrington, were there any requests for public comment?
I didn't see any.
Okay. No requests for public comment, going once, going twice, going three times. There were no requests for public comment at this evening's meeting. We now stand adjourned. We now stand adjourned at. Oh, I'm sorry. Was there a motion to adjourn?
No, boo.
It's been moved by Parker, supported by Carrington to adjourn the meeting. Roll call Clerk Doyle.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
That motion carries, we stand adjourned at 6:47 PM.